Okay. So we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank everyone for joining us. While we can be in the open session, we're just preparing for the executive session. Please join me in the hallway.
I'd like to say this to the United States of America and to teach this one nation under the universal theme.
Mary Grant. Oh, Margaret, Margaret, could you read the mission of this for us, please?
The performance of schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resilience. Clippers are creative, impulsive, and engaged learners who participate with their community, associated responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the rule of the range.
Thank you so much. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I remind everyone the meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. Are you recording tonight? Do you want to answer? Yes. So our new reporter for the school committee in schools is Katie Nelson. So welcome. Welcome. And additionally, please remember to keep your mic muted. Make sure they're recording. Uh, do you have to do the next one? No. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length, and due to open meeting law, the committee cannot add on a public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments following the committee's discussion of an item, and additional comments and feedback can always be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comment?
I think we've got basically two people.
Okay, let's have Amanda.
We'll have it all.
Please, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Hi, Amanda, we can hear you if you would like to share a public comment.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Please talk, please tell me you can't see me. Um, okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Amanda McGonigal. I'm on tonight to request that you pause any further discussion or consideration of merging schools or redistricting efforts. In the past two weeks, it's come to public attention that there are plans to merge two of our elementary schools, and this revelation has sparked some research by concerned parents, and what we found raises many questions and concerns. There's a significant veil of uncertainty surrounding the entire process, and it's clear that more time and careful consideration are needed. T-Ticket students recently experienced a major change with the repositioning of their longtime principal Sandy Capson Bellis. While the new principal Maureen is absolutely wonderful, it is worth noting that she has prior experience in redistricting schools in Sandwich. The timing of Sandy's move, Maureen's selection, given her background, and the strategic placement of all school choice children over in North Falmouth seemed a little too coincidental to ignore. From the outside, you'll understand how it appears that this plan has been in the works for much longer than two weeks, which warrants deeper conversation and investigation on behalf of the school committee, our school communities, and Falmouth as a whole. We can't rush into a targeted redistricting or merging of schools, especially when considering the significant impact on two student populations who are already disadvantaged compared to their other Falmouth peers. These students have the highest needs and lowest test scores in the district. This alone should make us cautious about any disruptive changes. Unlike Mullen Hall and North, East Falmouth has failed to show significant progress towards improvement targets. It would be irresponsible to transfer our children, transfer our children to an environment that has not demonstrated the capacity to meet educational standards. I urge you to continue with establishing a building needs committee, but for them to formulate and prepare multiple plans that address all of these valid concerns. We must pause all discussions about merging elementary schools or redistricting, and the building needs committee should have ample time to explore all plausible options and present them to the school committee for thorough evaluation. On a personal note, when housing prices skyrocketed here on Cape, my family had the option. Is that it?
That's the mission. You just want to finish your thought.
Say it again, sorry. Did, was, was it her time?
Sorry, if you want, just wanted to finish your thought.
Oh, sure. Um, on a personal note, when housing prices skyrocketed, my family had the option to sell our home for well over what we paid, but we chose not to because our daughter loved T-Ticket, and we wanted our three-year-old son to have that same experience. And I know our story is not unique. We believe in the value of these community schools and the stability they provide to our children, so please, let's take the necessary time to ensure that any decisions made are in the best interest of all of our students and our community. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Amanda. Anyone else have a public comment? Come on up. We don't ask at the, at the chair.
Hi, my name is Liam Rock, and I am both a staff member at T-Ticket Elementary and a member of the community for many years. No-belt. That's what we preach, right? We take care of others, we promote kindness, thoughtfulness, and no hate. We don't discriminate. We live by the credo, see something, say something. Well, tonight I'm here to say something. No-belt does not apply just one week out of the year. It applies to each and every one of us every day. We, and by we, I include all of you, are here to best serve the needs of all our currently enrolled students, which is why the proposal to merge the two elementaries in this town with the highest needs population, to me, is nothing short of deplorable. That's selective and targeted redistricting in my mind. The suggestion that this decision needs to be accepted within a 10-week timeframe is ridiculous to me. Stop, please, think. Don't discriminate and divide our beloved community. Instead, unite us. Last week's announcement clearly indicates the time has come for us to consider redistricting. It's long overdue. Certainly, we can all agree that the demographics of Falmouth have changed dramatically over the past two decades. I'm sure we can also agree that many of our school buildings are aging, and the time has also come to assess their viability. Our first steps should include thorough inspections of each building, projected fiscal expenses of maintaining and retrofitting them for varying usage, and most importantly, a redistribution of students and their respective programs in an equitable fashion. Let's do our jobs, slow down, gather data, take a breath, collaborate, work as one. After all, this is a community problem, and a community problem demands a community solution.
Thank you. Thanks. Do you have anyone else from the public comment? Oh, possibly. Okay, thank you. Do you have our... Yeah. Okay. So we're going to skip ahead of the update from Wapakon tribe until they have a chance to turn around and cover actually money. A minute or two ahead. So we'll start with the presentation of iReady. I think it's coming. Can you get it?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and giving us this opportunity to update you on what has been going on in the world of math, at least for K to eight in the past year. My name is Karen Carson. I am the K to six STEM department head. It's some familiar pieces on the table, some new pieces. It's great to be kind of back here with all of you. With me tonight is Lori Gettle, my counterpart. It's seven to twelve, and Robin Bowerman, our instructional math coach for K to four. As you know, last year, we implemented a new math program. Our goal tonight is to share with you what's happened over the past year, look at some of the data to highlight some of the successes that we've had, and share a little bit about where do we go from here. You can go to slide three. Thank you. Then I'm sorry. So our journey started a little over three years ago when Robin led us through the HQIM process to select a new math program. It was quite comprehensive, hours looking at all different programs, going through quite the evaluation process. And finally, in the spring of 2023, after doing some pilots and field tests of a couple of different programs, we ultimately chose Curriculum Associates iReady program. This is the first time we had had a consistent math program K to eight in a long time. I can't mean in all the years I've been here, we've been consistent K to four or K to six, but this time we are K to eight, everyone using the same program, and that, to me, is playing with for Falmouth. Planning began right away. We, our decision was made in the spring of 2023, we began right away. Over the summer, teachers started taking some professional development on their own time. That was not official, but the iReady provides some online tutorials. We kind of put together a menu for them. Many of our teachers took, took advantage of that. We did some manipulative assessments. We got materials into the hands of the teachers so that when they showed up in August, they were ready to go. The fall hit, and we, kids showed up, and we hit the ground running day one. The program starts with, at all of the levels, what they call Lesson Zero, and every student K to eight started their math journey last year with Lesson Zero. As the year went on, it was quite an all-encompassing year. To get through year one, I, we were trying to think of a way to visually represent what last year was like. So rather than just listing all of the things we did, we looked at it in terms of the picture you see behind me. We did PD, we put out Math Chat newsletters, we attended GLL meetings and focused on that in our agenda. We ran PLCs at Morse Pond, again, focusing on teaching and learning in math and what is happening with the program. We had coaching, offering teachers and students multiple strategies, and all along looking for consistency in the program. We talked a lot about implementing with fidelity. We like to think about it in terms of implementing with integrity, which allows for the teacher's styles to shine through. Fidelity kind of limits you, but integrity holds you, holds you accountable, but at the same time, gives you some freedom. So it was, it was quite a year. We're proud of the work that we've done. Robin's going to share with you a couple of specific outcomes of what kind of happened, and then Lori's going to kind of share with you some of the goals, and then we'll come back and we'll look more specifically at some depth. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. So we had, as Karen said, quite a year last year. We started the year with creating SMART goals that were optional for teachers to use for their evaluations throughout all of the schools, and that really went through some of the expectations that we had of how we would implement the program with integrity. We had consistent use of lesson routines and structure, and that's really one of the primary benefits of iReady is the idea that we, across K to eight, have developed a specific structure for lessons that will be developmentally appropriate, but also consistent throughout all of the grades. Those structures are surrounded around math discussion, really having students have an opportunity to talk about the math with each other and to describe how they would solve a problem, which we are all discovering. Many students have different ways of solving it, and it, a lot of times, they come up with strategies that we haven't even thought of. There's the Try, Discuss, Connect routine, which encourages students and teachers to evaluate problems, try to figure out a way to do it before being, coming, again, the discussion, and then connecting back to the standards. We worked hard to implement small group differentiated instruction to give an opportunity for students to work with peers, to also have individual or small group instruction with their teacher, and to access the personalized instruction portion of the program. Our focus was on data. Data from the diagnostic increased instructional awareness and strategy so that teachers could actually see which group their students belonged in based on ongoing diagnostics and meet those students where they were at in a much more reasonable way. As an eighth-grade math teacher, I was always trying to find ways to meet my students where they were at, but without really good data, that's very difficult to do. So our focus was on outcomes. So we have our personalized learning program, which is Follow My Path. It's directly tied to the diagnostic that students take, though the instruction that they get is related to what they've demonstrated, their level of knowledge during that diagnostic. And there are suggested and recommended times for the students to be on My Path, but the students are really focusing on the outcome. So they're not focusing on how many minutes I've been on it, they're focusing on one to two lessons a week. And finally, the fidelity of the routines has, we already seen how that has worked vertically as students have progressed this fall into the next grade, as fall teachers are seeing that they're remembering those routines and strategies in a way that we didn't have before, because everybody kind of had their own spin on things, which was great, but when you then combine all of those children into the next class, sometimes it is a little bit challenging to manage. And also horizontally across the school, so students at Mullen Hall and East Falmouth and T-Ticket and North Falmouth are all getting the same routines and strategies across the district, and then when they go into Morse Pond, they're coming with that background. So the outcomes from last year, I think, were substantial over to this year's. So this year with the implementation goals for year two, we're really trying to utilize those resources and routines. We found that the teachers were just trying to find their footing last year within the curriculum and all of the different opportunities that this new program can provide. And we're, after seeing those teachers in the PD today, I think all of us can say like, we're excited to see these, these teachers really hit their stride. The focus for this year, what we're trying to really hone in on is our support to the teachers as well as other administration and the MTSS structure. Today, the professional development was focused on differentiation, the MTSS structure, and small group differentiation, and the teachers were extremely excited about it because they were able to speak intelligently on the matter versus last year when they were still learning. The excitement is, well, it's really good to see because they actually have the data from last year to learn from. But yeah, on that matter, the data is next.
I just, one thing.
I'm sorry.
No, I just was thinking about it. I think one of the things with iReady, Lori was talking about like how teachers are ready for more, there's so much there, so much. Like, it is such a comprehensive, comprehensive program, both from your core instruction piece to materials and resources and lessons for, for struggling learners, for kids that are needing more enrichment. All, like, it's not only telling you kids need help, it's telling you what to do. And, and that's a game changer. And last year, it was just kind of like, let's get it, get it set, and now they're ready for all of that. And so it's really an amazing program.
She said, you say it best. There we go. All right, so you're going to see, we've got several slides with the same kind of comparison of the data. Our district is to the far right, and this is the spring gap from the, there's three diagnostics, one in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring. And then you can see, we're being compared to Massachusetts to the left, the nation, even further to the left, and the farthest left is pre-COVID national norm. And I want to talk about this, these different colors. As you can see, there's a variation of green, a variation of red, but they're overall pretty diverse. They're not talking about a calendar year, they're talking about proficiency within the math standards. So a student in green is a student who's proficient in the grade level standards. A student in yellow are approaching the grade level expectations, and a student who's been labeled in one of the red categories is, they're really needing the extra support with achieving proficiency and working towards the grade levels. Within each domain, they could be labeled a different color or a different grade level. So there's what Karen was speaking to about how much data that this program provides. A student who is exceeding in geometry could be labeled a mid or above grade level, but they're really lacking in algebra. It provides the teacher that data in September. This is stuff that we would find out well into the school year after getting to know the child. So it's, it's been absolutely amazing. But as you can see, we are starting to show, district, our district is after year one, we're starting to show that we're getting closer to the spring pre-COVID gap that the nation was showing. It's still, you know, we still have some work to do with, especially that bottom 11% and that 26%, but we're always working. But yeah, it was, it was a positive outcome. So this slide shows K one and two for the spring, and as you can see, the district is on the far right bars. So for kindergarten, we had 75% in the green and 25% in the yellow. You can see that the Massachusetts standards had 69% in the green and 31% in the yellow. The national standard or norms were even lower in the green and higher in the yellow, and the pre-pandemic rate, you can see that for kindergarten was coming in at a better point for pre-pandemic. So pre-pandemic, we had 73% in the green, and we now have 75%. So that's how you read those bars. For the rest of the grades, one, two, in general, we are overall above the state and nation, and either above or at pre-pandemic, excuse me, pre-pandemic norms. So if you look at the next slide, it will give you three, four, and five. You can see that those red indicators of being two or more grades below are lower for our district. In grade three and four, we are equal to pre-pandemic, but certainly lower than the state or the nation. And grade five, we're a little bit over in the red by 1%, but in general, we are meeting those pre-pandemic norms and better than the state and the nation. And then on the next slide, we have grades, and with them in me, you can tell the things or where our students are definitely in a majority in the mid or above grade level. So those are pretty amazing results for a one-year program with teachers' learning programs, students becoming familiar with the program, and students becoming familiar with the way we gave the diagnostic. Thank you, Robin.
So Robin and Lori shared some broad data with you. We can also drill down and look a little bit deeper, and we can look by domain, and then we can also look by subgroups. So the next slide that you see here is by domain, and iReady breaks the instruction into four domains, pretty typical math domains, numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. And in this chart, blue is good. So this is, there's a lot of blue up there. Our district is the column, is each of the columns, where the ones with the color. Thank you. And then the national norm there for, for the tests. But so this takes that broad data of how we're doing and breaks it down to say, how are our grade levels doing in each domain? So again, you know, when I look up, my first inkling is there is a lot of blue, and that is really good. Certainly, there's some gray that is below the national in different increments, but again, there's always the room for improvement, and we're, we're working towards moving all of those, those kids forward, opportunities for growth. So not only can we drill down by domain, we can drill down into some of our subgroups. So the next few slides that you're going to see are going to look at relative placement and growth by race. We're going to look at relative placement and growth for our newcomers and relative placement and growth for special education. When we talk about relative placement and growth, it's two different data points. So students get two different scores, they get their, their placement is like where their grade level is, how they're performing against grade level standards. And then, once we hit the second diagnostic in January, and the end of the year diagnostic, at the end of the year, we also can look at growth rates. And iReady will set from their beginning of the year diagnostic, they will set two growth targets for every student. They will set a typical growth rate and a stretch growth rate. Typical growth rate is moving kids along at, um, I don't know how to say this to you. So they're, they're, they're growing one year at a time, which is what they should do. I'm a fifth grader, I go through fifth grade, now I'm a sixth grader. My typical growth is I growth. Stretch growth, if kids are meeting that, that's where we're going to start to close gaps. Stretch growth is just that. It is for our struggling learners that have more to make up, that if they're meeting those stretch growth rates, within two to three years, they will have caught up to their old peers. So on the chart, so this first one, just kind of walking through what you're seeing, and then we'll look at the other ones, again, has the placement distribution, just like the bars you saw earlier, but that were the other way. And the top line is our overall students, and then the breakdown below that. So, you know, there's definitely still some students that we're working towards, certainly moving forward as we continue to understand the program, as we grow and understand the MTSS structure and the differentiation works that we can give to kids in classrooms, we hope to see that shrink. What's really kind of exciting, and you're going to see this on all of them, is, so that blue, now the blue column is, is now looking at the growth, and that's the median level for kids in that group. So meaning the, the middle value, like for all overall, is 133%, meaning some kids grew more than 133%, some grew, grew less. But to see, to see it all of them, that kids are meeting this growth beyond 100% is really encouraging.
And 100% in one year.
Yes.
100% typical.
Is your typical growth. So these are probably, these kids that are in, are probably the kids that are, are meeting their stretch growth as well, or coming really close to it. So the next slide is, again, very similar, you know, it gave some, like, media to you, but it's, this is the distribution of our English language learners. Again, that top line hedge, that's, that's going to be all of them. Again, here can be where we have some, some growth to, to do. However, at the same time, we had some really positive outcomes with our, our newcomers. Lori had a situation at the Moore School last year, student came in, went Student came in, we went to just quick, give a little bit, he was a newcomer. And he arrived, I believe in January, no, no, excuse me, November. He took the first place in the exam, or the first diagnostic, excuse me, and he placed at a second grade level. And the kid, the student and one of my math teachers who was working really diligently utilized the bulldog time, really dove into the program, and he only met expectations, and he surpassed, he's now placed in a like, it was kind of, it was one of his high scores. Yeah. And he was, he blew out of expectations.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's lots of really good things happening. The last slide for this kind of section is looking at our special ed students. Again, working towards proficiency, definitely separate growth. But again, each year as we get better at this, diving into some more of the resources. Today, we love to prerequisite reports and kind of what to do with those. And I think teachers are on that and ready to get, now that we have the data from our first, first. We just finished our first round of spring, of beginning of the year diagnostic testing. Teachers are making their groups, finding the resources they need, and giving that targeted instruction to help kids make growth. This is, this is just a summary slide of, and it's all of the blue that was in the last view. It doesn't.
So this is just a quick snapshot of the personalized instruction program that Lori was just talking about and that we've been referencing. It's the MYPATH. And the MYPATH recommendation is to have students be on the personalized instruction for between 30 and 50 minutes a week. That is not a day, that is a week. And what this is showing is the different average minutes by grade for the week. And then if you look underneath the grade level, it indicates what the average percent of lessons passed was. So you can see that as students are using the program within the recommended timeframes, they are between 80, 80% and 95% of passing those lessons that we talked about where it's two to three lessons a week.
There's things built in, like when you think about, okay, well, only 80%, like what if, what if they don't pass the lesson? The program will flag, flag it for the teachers, and that's where the teachers are going to intervene. It actually will shut down a domain for a student until the teacher can intervene in person, and then they can turn the domain back on. So again, it's, it's giving our teachers some real insight into exactly what skills students need.
And these are very dynamic lessons. It's not a dry Khan Academy kind of lesson. They are animated for the younger students. They have little characters that are doing the teaching, and they make little jokes and use a variety of different counters or creatures or, you know, things that are interesting to the students. So they're not dry lessons at all. They're very, they're engaging, yes.
So that's all we have for you tonight. We're happy to answer any questions. We're, we also offer, if anyone wants to come and see a math lesson, we'd be happy to, to schedule something when one of our teachers and let you see the program in action. You know, just reach out to me or to Lori, depending on what level you want to see. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for that. All more meaningful. Any questions?
If I could just ask one question. First of all, your presentation was very good. If you go back to the one that was the grays and the blues.
Yes.
Third grade and third, fourth had the most grays. Grays are bad. Fourth grade. Is there a way, I like how you broke it all down. Is there a way to break down by elementary? It's the entire fourth grade.
That, that's the way we can draw it. I mean, we have the ability at the different schools to look at how kids are doing in terms of the placement and the, and like their growth and things.
Yeah.
But by domain, again, we can, we can break it down there, but I'd have to look to see.
Yeah, we can look and see. There is various domain information embedded in the reports, but I can't remember exactly how it rolls out.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is that, you know, fifth through eighth, it's kind of the, the same building, all that stuff. And it'd be interesting to see if those, the difference in third and fourth is, if more research goes to that.
Store.
Right. So those are the years that the students were in pre-K and kindergarten during COVID.
Oh, I understand that. I was saying that.
Trying to.
Yeah. My, my point was that in fourth grade, if I'm looking at the geometry,
Yeah.
it's just slightly under the national average.
Yeah, even our grays are pretty good grays.
Oh, yeah. I did see that with the overall number. If you go to the overall number, certain groups are actually kind of bringing that average number up. And I just didn't know on the elementary school levels, any grade, that you see a trend that, you know, this school is.
I think more when I look at it from a domain level. So like if you look across the measurement domain.
Yeah.
Measurement is unfortunately usually one of the last units in a math curriculum. Right? And so you're, you're up against time getting, getting through MCAS and getting to the end of the year. So hopefully over time, as we get better with this program, I already does a nice job of weaving some of that in throughout the year. And I would hope that if we're sitting here next year, we see that, that shift away from there.
Yeah, I'd just be more interested to see if, if certain elementary schools are, you know, progressing or getting to that stretch point quicker, and if we can then kind of dissect.
To why, yeah. Can we share some strategies? Sure.
The stairs?
Oh, sorry. Not my fault.
So are you going to lay these next to MCAS? Did MCAS just announce? So will you lay this?
Eventually, yes.
Next to our MCAS?
So MCAS just went public today. I personally have not had a chance to see, see any breakdowns, see anything. But yes, as we start to dissect the MCAS data, I think as a district, we certainly will be looking at how these match up and, and go from there. But it's a good question. Two very different data points, but certainly can tell, tell the story.
Because they measure growth. It's on you. You can probably, you have to pay attention. They measure growth potentials and all that too in the MCAS, right? So I, it just would be curious.
It would be.
Get your money for this program, the money and time this program hopefully is.
And if nothing else, they have two different.
Two different sets of data.
They're just a point, yeah.
That wasn't really great presentation. It's very exciting and positive. My question was about the, kind of this one as well, the fourth grade, was a question about the exceeds expectations students. I know that's probably a very small cohort, but I have heard from several parents have kids in two different schools in the third to fifth grade who are exceeding, and they don't feel that this program is pushing them or it's not leading them into tougher terrain as quickly as they think their student could do. So they're achieving like As or 100s on all their exams, and they're concerned that it's not, you know, for the kids who are really into math, which is probably not that many. And I was wondering if this above-average collection has any sort of breakdown in it for students who are really pushing into like the next grade or the two grade above on certain things.
So I think two things. MYPATH will push them ahead. It, it does max out at a certain point, and only, meaning it only goes so high. So like a fifth grader can probably, I think it maxes out after ninth grade, right? Because once you get to, then now you're getting into math by course, not just general math. But so if you could potentially have a fifth grader who's MYPATH, right? Their, their personalized instruction is, is giving them seventh and eighth grade information. I had a kid who was taking the diagnostic.
I didn't get that.
Yeah. I had a kid who was taking the diagnostic in my office, office the other day, trying to get, get caught up. And he said to me, he goes, Mrs. Carson, this is asking you about standard deviation. What is that? He was a, a fifth grader, and I'm like, I know, but he must be a really good math student. You know, like, so when he's going to push him, and what's going to happen is when his MYPATH comes out, those are going to be the lessons that they are teaching. So there's part one. Part two is as we look at our tiered instruction, and everyone gets that core instruction in tier one, it will, it will be teachers, they're in the small groups with those kids, looking for ways to enrich. Now, the program definitely offers some things, and as we said, year one was really about getting our feet wet. And now that we're into year two, digging more deeply into some of those, those lessons and those resources. Teachers have at their fingertips access, it's called the teacher toolbox, and they mainly stay within their grade level because that's the core curriculum. But they have access to K to A. So while we don't necessarily want them, a sixth grade teacher teaching a grade eight curriculum, they could certainly be looking where standards match up and giving a student a little bit of a deeper dive into the standards by using some advanced materials.
Do you think in future years, data sets might include this contingent of students who are?
I don't know. I mean, I think it includes them already, but I don't think it can, I, I don't know a way to kind of disaggregate that and pull just those students out.
The other thing is the program has several different kinds of enrichment opportunities embedded that we are going to be exploring now that we're becoming more familiar with the program. There's a Math in Action section, which is a two or three-day problem-solving project that is related to something that is either involved in the environment. There's actually, I saw one, I forget, it might have been in fourth grade, that is composting, which I know is of interest. And so, you know, there's those, they have differentiated activities within the regular curriculum. So a teacher can have a on-grade level and approaching grade level and above-grade level activity, all happening at the same time. So that, moving towards those differentiated instruction opportunities will not only benefit the students who are approaching, but also those who are above.
Any last question? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Very much.
Is anybody on that side of the table hot? I'm freezing. Yeah, this is, yeah, by the window, our Ryan, Ryan's going to the rescue. He's going to fix the temperature.
All right, all right. We are here to present our 24, 25 district goals. You know, from the last year or so, we are having shared goals among the schools and the district. And so tonight. Okay, so this is a familiar graphic that we created last year to show what our focus really is. And last year, it was, we were refocusing on the academic excellence, on rigor, the student opportunities, and the hands-on learning. And so we're, we are continuing that. And then when we say committed to excellence in every student every day, we meet every student and meet them where they are. So their personalized learning, you know, their physical health, social, emotional wellbeing, so the whole chat, right? And then that is what we call the proper experience. Always looking for that diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And then what you're going to see as our goals this year is, we're going to be explaining that we know that when we reach, when we help every student with the equity piece, that we are really reaching that excellence, right? From helping every student. And so based on the equity hot from last year, you're going to see how that is woven in. And then always improving the two-way communication. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Henry to share more about the equity.
So I like the last one. It's, you know, it is really a framework for success. And so I also have to think about where is our frame, how we're, we're thinking about success. And so in this area, we're talking about how the data, I'm so glad we're talking about data crazy because we need to find out great data that can help us with any kind of barriers to success. What are the barriers to success? And so therefore, we really want to find out, we're really looking for, who can get those data for us? And that's why we partnered with the audit company, which is the Midland Equity Consortium. They're the ones that say, all right, where are the, where are your barriers you're dealing with? And so they went through a lot of process with us. What was really good is that they didn't want just one source, but really find three different sources triangulate and make sure that we're not overestimating, but really no errors in there. And I'm so glad that they did. Three different areas, they went, they, they, they had discipline data, and they interviewed some of the principals about that data. They also surveyed not only students, but parents and as well staff, focused in on some three domains specifically. And then we established, every school established a, a self-assessment group, and they looked and tried to figure out where they were at. And the responses were whether they're late, emergent, established, advanced. And so really, they took a really good overview, trying to find out where, where might there might be barriers for them to do. And what was really good is to, after they found that out, the, the finding were, are there bright spots? Which means area that we have to continue, like we don't want to just stop, stuff that we, we're doing well, so we want to know if price up, continue. And areas of improvement where we really need to make sure that we move from a low level to, to emergent and advanced. So that's our stuff. And so in this document, so we go from, from the aspect of finding data, now we're really looking at trying to figure out, getting all this material, getting these concerns, and then trying to prioritize. Because there was extensive, you can see this, there's extensive material, the data they have, and we can't solve everything all at once. And so what we went through is try to communicate with people and start to find out what might be some priority areas. And so what do we do? We, we, they talked with principals and equity teams. They went over and talked to staff meetings, principals talked to their staff about the data. We were here in May talking about the, the findings. We had a family forum where we came in and we laid out these concerns, and a lot of you were there. And again, what are the priorities? We went through our instructional leadership. And through all these different engagements, we, we're all looking for is, okay, what is going to be our focus here? Who are your prior, priorities for this and area? And so we had some outcomes. All the outcomes you can find in my, on my page, but also the website. You can find that, the whole comprehensive report that's in there. So that's, that's. And then, so over the summer, we took all that information, got a retreat. We said, okay, let's, let's really do, let's do some good digging. And I loved the, the summer retreat where we had some discussion. That was important, really trying to figure out. Really trying to figure out, let's make sure that we really dig in, not symptoms, but really the cause roots and stuff. Let's make sure if we're gonna pick these, let's make sure we're not gonna cure some of the, you know, the simple, but really what's the elements, what's really going on. So we had some really good discussions. We sat down, we took all this information. And then what we started to do is we started to gather priority concerns into three different groups. So here are three equity concerns. And we grouped them up into one and we said, this would be a good possible goal to focus on. So at this point, was area concern was schools acknowledge that the curriculum could further incorporate diverse content in a sophisticated way with appropriate activities, humanizing language. So that was inclusive representation on that. The second area was an area of improvement. Schools report that they need to be more intentional at integrating cultural response and teaching into teachers' instructional practice. And another one was teachers feel that professional learning opportunities could be more useful. So those three, as we said, those were important priorities. Let's group them up and say, let's try to figure out a goal for this. Let's really have a district-wide goal. So that was our, that was our first grouping. Next, we said, this was very important to a lot, even the community said this is important. So another grouping was just one. And it stood out. Schools reported that the code conduct needs to be applied more fairly and equitable to all students. We saw it as very important for a lot of people. So again, we said, let's, really this year, let's focus on that area. So that's a second grouping. And our final grouping is, again, a bright spot. It said, let's make sure we continue this. Families feel included and feel more comfortable discussing student academics and behavior progress. And then area of improvement is schools lack formal opportunities to engage with family and the broader school community to inform the school home. So this will be another focus area. So we have three focus areas. And I'm just saying that this is just part of the cycle. Like, I say a lot, each one is an equity data increase cycle, which means this is only part of the, part of our way of making sure everyone will find excellence for everyone. Because after we gather, we want to talk about goals, the, our Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium will be helping us with resources and actual metrics to find out where, how can progress and say, is this where we're headed? And we're gonna continue, we'll say, okay, what's next? So it's not, excellence and equity is not a destination. We're not gonna say, okay, we're done. It is a journey. We're continuing to improve. So at this point, we're gonna go to our first goal.
My name is Tom. I'm the principal of Lawrence School. Thank you for your work and support of the students and families. I am here to do a quick overview of goal number one, the student learning experience. You can see the goal number one rationale in the audit insights indicates some progress in implementing culturally responsive curriculum systems. However, there is significant room for growth, like Henry was mentioning. With professional development, teachers expressed a desire for meaningful and intentional PD focused on culturally responsive practices. The data-informed PD plan to develop a district-wide professional development plan informed by the data to support the multi-tiered system of sports and the best practices for culturally responsive teaching. And the inclusive Clipper Experience, our mission is to ensure that every student, every day, benefits from an inclusive and equitable Clipper Experience. And here is the statement. We believe in FAMM, that all students will have a sense of belonging, that they know their value for their unique identities, strengths, interests, needs, languages, exceptionalities, and background. And now to talk about the action plan. The incredible principal, Morse Pond, is a Tim Adams.
Thank you. Tim Adams, principal of Morse Pond. So how do we take that language and make it into a plan that we'll see tangible results from? So these are the actions that we've selected. So really digging into curriculum, looking at the selection of our instructional materials, which you already got, I think, one specific example with the IREDDI program, which wasn't mentioned specifically, but does incorporate materials that culturally responsive and inclusive. Start to see some of the story problems that are used in the program. That's just kind of a small example of that. But that one program really meets all these criteria. Professional development and resources and looking beyond even just physical materials that we use in the classroom, but what instructional practices are teachers able to use and learn new ways of instruction. And even including areas of the physical design of the classroom itself in how that can support inclusive instruction. And then the final point that we actually were able to dive into this afternoon, early release professional development, looking at the multi-tiered system of support, you know, using three tiers and how we identify student needs and then how we respond to them. And really cataloging all of that for the district for academics, social, emotional, learning, behavior, and really having a prescriptive plan for how we meet the needs of all of our students. Then I'll turn it over to Rose.
Where's her adjective? Can you get an adjective?
Rose, Rose is up. Same.
Well, I'm just waiting. Okay.
I didn't have to present goal two. So again, the rationale for goal two. We're looking at student discipline and MTS. And discipline, again, we already opened from last year and continue one, as Henry said, that someone never stops. So we are committed to excellence. FAMM is dedicated to achieving excellence in both academics and student behavior. Last year, we focused on those behaviors that disrupted and destruction. And we carried that vertically. Like, we started that, we brought that right from pre-K all the way up and that evolved in that Clipper Experience that you hear us talking about. The feedback, the improvements from students and staff and community highlight the needs to address the inconsistency in the application and practice of student discipline. Again, we looked at that. We looked at our incident reports. We looked at how we were handling disciplines in all of the buildings. And we got together again, as Henry said, that beautiful retreat over the summer and we worked hard to align. We want to know how consistent and equitable practices. So how we address those concerns, we're committed again to the discipline code of conduct and practices. And we're including our multi-tiered system of supports, that MTS. That's looking at, again, across the district. How is it defined? How does it look in each building? And is it equitable across all the schools? And then the ongoing efforts, we are continually reviewing and looking at our discipline practices and always measuring that fence. And through our restorative lengths, our circles, our discussions, that Clipper experience, that common language that we're bringing it all through, makes it an even playing field for all of our kids across the district. So our goal statement. The FAMM discipline code of conduct and practices, including our MTS, multi-tiered systems of support, will be applied consistently and equitably across all schools and all students. And now, drum roll. Doc.
The amazing doc. That is also a cheerleader, right?
So the action items on this, you know, what the strength in our district, I think, by a wide margin is the people we have working with students. Our, our teachers and staff that work directly with students and the assistant principals that support them really are outstanding. And I think what we learned from the audit, what we learned and the commitment in this goal is really systems work that helps them be more effective. Because one of the things we learned was that our system that they were using to communicate with one another, what happened in the classroom and gets to an assistant principal in their office, what happened in an office and gets back to the classroom. That communication and consistency with that was not consistent. And then with that, if you look at pre-K through 12, thinking, a key element we know we have to have is high expectations for scholarly behavior, particularly behavior that disrupts the learning of others can't happen in a classroom. Has to be addressed and has to be stopped and learned from and there's accountability and learning from. And so that really leads to where our action plan is. One is working with the district-wide, looking at the system itself, what we're using electronically, how we enter, how we enter it, what we do with it. Professional development for our staff, from assistant principals through the teachers, working with principals and really getting to making sure we know how that system works. We're communicating clearly about what those pieces are. District-wide guides and practices that help us, you hear a lot, multi-tiered support system. Karen Carson says very well, that's a noun, not a verb. It's a structure and a way to understand student behaviors and the way you respond to it. Rather than something that we do, it's a way for us to have a common language and a common understanding of how we're teaching those behaviors that are necessary to replace behaviors that may be stopping the learning of others. And then the essential principles of monitoring, evaluating, and creating good good feedback loops that provide opportunities for teachers, for families, for students, and for administration to be on a, on a common dialogue about what's working and where we can grow in the system itself and supporting the people at the, at the, at the level of working. So that is goal two. I'm going to turn it over to the miraculous team.
So goal three is about two-way communication. I'm worrying about suddenly intermitting full faculty. And it really picks right up where goal two are. Talking about communication and the idea of it including feedback. So the rationale for around two-way communication is to point out that although families feel included and comfortable discussing their students' academic and behavioral progress, school teams aim to expand the involvement of families, staff, and students in shared decision-making. So beyond the discussion about student progress and focus on the students to involve families and staff a little bit more in the decision-making about how our schools work. The commitment to excellence is focusing on the fact that shared decision-making reinforces that commitment that we have to excellence and engages all the stakeholders in movement forward. So by having everybody involved, understanding what excellence looks like, that helps everyone move forward. Engagement and relationships, we know the importance of engagement, having people feel really involved and relationships being the key to all success. So ongoing engagement and relationship building are essential to ensuring a meaningful Clipper Experience for all. We want the feedback to be inclusive, gathering the feedback from a diverse range of families in a variety of ways, representing our student body. We want all voices to be heard. And part of that is to have the communication be accessible and having the communication accessible to all members of the community. So that brings us to the goal, which is to continue to improve FAMM public schools' two-way communication.
Hi, Rebecca Viero, principal at Morse Pond. I'm gonna talk to you about how are we going to start to meet that goal of our continuous improvement for our two-way communication. And some things that you're gonna start to see is you're gonna see through, you've probably seen our regular communications come out on a weekly basis from the school buildings. That's part of our regular routines. So now we're going to take that to the next step. And we wanna make sure that we are also collecting some feedback. So when we're talking two-way, you know, we were pushing out a lot of information. So we wanna look at ways that we can start to collect more information about successes, the areas of improvement for some of our events that happen at school. So you'll start to see some different modes of feedback, whether it be a QR code with a symbol, two questions from meet your teacher night that's coming up. Or as we're continuing to finish our last few, we're rounding out the kind of back-to-school time of the school year. You'll see some surveys coming out about how the transition from summer back into the learning environments in school and what, how that went and where we can improve. Another piece is we have a student information system called Power School. And it holds all kinds of information that is useful not only for families, but it's useful for us at the buildings and the district level as well. And we just wanna make sure that all of our information is up to date as people and students are rising grades and we have people that are moving in and moving out. It's always a good time to make sure that we check all of our symptoms to ensure our information is most current and up to date. And then finally, there are some communication tools that we have found successful that we would like to continue to promote. One in particular is something called Talking Points, which is, and can be act as an app or like an email. And that is something that helps with translation of information. So a family can sign up for Talking Points and they can select which language they would like the delivery of information in. And it automatically translates into their language that they selected. And then they can communicate back with us in their language and then it translates back to whatever language occurrence we have on our end. So again, it's a way of breaking down some barriers and making sure that we can have that open to a communication. So a few more goals coming from Kelsey Kelly.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Kelly, I'm the principal at FAMM. And again, we are perpetually working on our two-way communication. And in part of how we do that is how we outline and provide transparency. We share that communication plan detailing methods, frequency, and purpose of communications, specify how and when information will be shared with stakeholders. We also work to make sure that all of those communications are accessible to everyone. And that requires a lot of work on the local school level, but also at the district level because we have so many different languages that we wanna make sure that we're fitting all the families that we can. Also, continued kind of piggybacking on the Power School is really verification of that contact information. It does no good if we send information out and the email is changed. So how do we make sure that, we are working to make sure that that is up to date in our database and so that people are actually accessing the information we're sharing. And again, integrated, connected with Power School, which that is really something on our level that is going to be a game changer in a way to be able to target communications to specific groups of people to make sure that they have access to specific information. We can use the connected system to do a big email, but to also be more specific, which again, is, helps us with that work actually.
So goal four, sustainability. And why is it so important? Well, we're all excited because we have a national board for the Green Remen District, one of 10 districts in the nation. So, but why are we proud of that, right? And I feel that in a town like FAMM, schools, in any town, schools should reflect their community. And sustainability is really important to FAMM. I mean, that's obvious in many ways. We have been building our relationships with our WizHole partners, with the Greater FAMM partners, including, you know, Watfoi and the Kunemesta. And so all across the town, there are many ways we're trying to build sorry, environmental stewardship and the sustainability. And so by bringing that into the schools, then we're reflecting. We're teaching our kids what the town, the community values. And so, so we got the award and you can't stop it, right? No matter what we're doing, we gotta keep going. So we have identified additional areas that are important. Now, it's a standalone goal right now because we still know that we have things that we have to concentrate on. But we hope by the end of this year is that this just becomes a regular practice in our, in our school district. We don't have to have a standalone, that this is just the way we do business and it becomes embedded in everything we do when we think of excellence for our students. So, right over to Sandy.
I think Dr. Jared covered actually most of us. But I did just wanna highlight some of the positive impact that there have been studies that have shown that people do have positive results with their mental, physical, and social well-being as a result of engaging in the environmental stewardship. And if you kind of think of activities that might be in that category, they are social activities. And we think of our students, it offers them opportunities to be role models. It has a positive there too. And I think in kind of that final point, just really thinking about the actions and the impact on the environment, things that could be positive and negatives. You have teaching students, you know, the positive things about composting and then, you know, negative, like what happens if you don't. So like, you know, it's kind of more in both. All right, Dr. Teller. All right, Dr. Tellier.
So focusing in on our statement specifically, we want to continue to build that district-wide capacity for environmental stewardship among all stakeholders, right, and making sure that everyone is involved. So in doing that, we've got some key actions that we want to focus on.
We're going to buy a cow?
The first bullet here is the one, I'm just going to spend a couple of seconds here giving a little bit more information on. But as we're continuing to grow the opportunities to educate our students in environmental stewardship and sustainability or sustainable practices. I think there's so much, you know, encapsulated in the work that Carmela does. So I want to give a shout out to Kamal Mayansky and Power Learning Partnership Specialists. And really think about the experiences we have from kindergarten to Ocean's Day and students are learning about the relationship right to our coastal system, to Earth Day, where one of the, the exercises that they do is the math and science exercise. They learn how far their food had to travel to get to their plate. So they learn about things that have to travel by plane or train or that they can pick up at the community farmer's market. But as we're digging into that too, you know, we talk about the work of composting and recycling. And then we think about how that interacts with not only our gardens at our different elementary schools and other schools, but our food justice initiative at the high school, the double its footprint this summer. And this is really growing and expanding and really helping us to think about that, that farm-to-school, farm-to-table connection. So just really calling those things out and then setting it up. So I'm going to turn it back to Sandy to share a little.
So that second bullet, improving new and existing strategies. So taking a look there at those two images show the steel cows. So this would offer the district the opportunity to have a, you know, the milk in a dispensary and reduce our waste. So we would not have the, the milk cartons and students, we would be able to choose, you know, how much milk that they would want. You could use reusable cups, you know, less waste. And as a district, we also want to take a look at our current recycling practices and see if those are areas in which we could improve as well. And then I think Mr. Dark steps.
Okay, the third point, goal point, we have to find is increase energy efficiencies through the exploration of electric buses and continue for solar option. And specifically, we're looking at federal and state grants from purchase of electric buses and vans, as well as charging stations. As you may recall, on a capital plan, we have a request for a purchase of a double electric van. We'll be using that in the day-to-day routes. But there's also opportunities to think about this from a regional level as well when you get into the electric buses. So we'll continue to push forward on that. The other opportunity to, again, to flow with this solar options and to continue a solo project. Our goal is to have one solo project on the April time ballot. You know, we've discussed a little sound with this possibility of the first project. We've been moving ahead of that. And so we hope to have that on the April ballot. The other, the third point in, in this area is looking at, you know, hand dryers for the bathrooms to reduce the paint noise that goes on there. And so we'll be doing a perspective analysis of adding hand dryers throughout the system at some point in the future. And the final goal point is improve our healthy schools through partnership with Farming Falmouth to bring fresh nutritious food to the school breakfast and lunch program and improve green spaces at the schools. As you know, we'll be attending the Mas Farm to Schools Retreat and, and the follow-up coaching sessions that they place at the Mas Farm to School Retreat. It's actually this week, Thursday, Friday, at the Rye Lock Farm in Winchester. So we'll be there at that retreat. So we're excited about that opportunity. As well as the local connections in Farming Falmouth that we've been involved in over the last few months as well. And, and finally, you know, one of the key goals is, is to, and we've made great progress here in both the high school as well as in the large school, is build green spaces, particularly adding gardens for all the district, the high school, and the food justice. It's really done a tremendous job of growing up the greenhouse spaces there. I'll add a new greenhouse, that space. We've just added a new greenhouse to the large school as well. And the opportunities to have a sustainable garden space throughout the district. So that's not sort of on one year, off one year. It's something that's a continuous program throughout all the schools.
It's always great hearing how you guys all pretty happily, that you all work on the same stuff at the same time. But so we'll be soon.
Okay, for the Goal Three about including two-way communication. I was just wondering, you know, sometimes these things go out of the backpack. You don't always get feedback. If you collect data about who is giving responses whether you're consistently getting it from certain contingent of your population parents and not mothers, do you have any way of breaking that down?
That's actually part of what we're looking at to, for instance, with the QR code. We're going to be able to collect some data that comes in of who is giving that particular response. So absolutely, those are some components that we'll be able to track through some of our newer pieces that we'll be putting in for our action points.
Okay.
I have heard from a lot of parents that the thing's in backpacks. It doesn't, the loop does not complete.
Just real quickly, Henry.
Yes.
If you go to page six or so, you, I think it's page six. It's the first equity audit results. It goes five, six, nine. This is more of a, basically you had a list of consultants root for improvement, then you grouped them. So the numbers five, six, nine, and the next page fifteen and seven, eight. That's because you have a list and broke them down. And some didn't fall into these groups. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Just, can I just add, that was the community meetings that we had.
Yeah.
And some of the leadership meetings. That's how they were selected, that they rose to the top on primary.
The numbers just confused me and I kept on going.
While we are working on it and not to forget the others.
Yes, thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to compliment everyone for this presentation. It's really very impressive. And I also wanted to compliment you, Dr. Dor, in how you framed this in the equity piece, that equity means excellence for all students. And I was particularly drawn to the, the goal rationale, commitment to excellence. The one that's dedicated to achieving excellence in both academics and student behavior. And I think that so often, we think that equity is just about students who maybe have challenges, whether it's social, emotional, linguistic, specialism. But it also means equity for those students that Katrina was talking about who may need to reach beyond their grade level. So I, I love how you position this, that equity benefits all students and particularly for academic excellence and student behavior. So I, I, I really appreciate that framing.
Any last questions? Carmella's?
Yeah. Some of these more specific exciting things like electric buses, a steel cow. And will there be more reports ongoing about the timeline of when that sort of stuff might come up? Yeah.
Probably more than you're going to.
We have, we have it all mapped out, believe me. Great. We're pretty excited about the steel cap bugger. Could you tell my question?
I want to be there the first time the kids try and use that. I've been all over the place until they sort it out. But it'll still.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I love how everyone's being so highly about the retreat as if like responding. You guys are all dumped in here smelling of the ones. Pretty comical. On superintendent goals for twenty-four, twenty-five. And.
Do you have?
Yeah, we have them at our spot and they're all the goals. I just want to point out that, because Katrina asked this question earlier, that the goals are the same as the goals that we had our first read on at our last meeting. And the goals are the things that we actually take action on. The other pieces, the key actions are for the evaluation process. So we can keep track of how things are going. Is that a fair representation?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there motion to act to approve superintendent's goals?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Terri, is her second?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Mike. Any discussion, comment? Okay. Guys, I think they're great. And I also love that they align so closely with the district goals because then you guys are all working in concert. And I imagine when we get to that point, the school committee goals, which probably align as well, and we will all be rowing in the same direction. Oh my gosh, we're all here. We can just vote. All in favor of improving the superintendent's goals, hey, I? And opposed, any intentions? Ask the unanimous, like, great, thanks so much. Okay, perfect, because as you're going to see in a second, the, Ryan, am I going to be able to share my screen? Or how am I going to? Because the presentation we're going to look at right now includes the goals. Okay, there we go. Okay, so next up is a presentation on the superintendent evaluation process. And we're going to, we're going to not spend as much time as we usually do talking about the timeline and instead, address the concerns that we had from last year about making sure everybody knows what you're supposed to be paying attention to throughout the year. So when we get to the end of the year, we actually know what we're doing. So this is where we fall. Lori did her self-assessment and worked with the values and stuff today to identify goals and, and those ones that we just approved and then we'll begin in the evaluation. Okay, just as an overview, all of the members on the, of the school committee review and track evidence all year long to demonstrate progress toward the superintendent's goals. And that includes every presentation from Lori or from staff that's tied to a goal or to a standard. And then also observations of meetings, events, communications that are tied to one of the goals or standards. So the goals are those that we just approved tied to equity, communication. And I already forgot. Equity, communication.
Sustainability.
And then also Lori will provide links to evidence in a tracking document. And then all the members have two obligations. One is to meet with the superintendent at the mid-year mark to talk about how things are going. And then a second obligation to complete a year of evaluation, which is actually in April because we need to get it done before the election cycle. So that's what we're going to spend most of our time looking at right now. And here's, if you could have the first date in your minds, if you want to jot it down, that the first obligation will be that January twenty-first to thirty-first in 2025. And the superintendent will sit down with each individual member of the product. The summative evaluation is an actual document that everyone, each member completes. And then all of those individual documents are combined into one overall document that is Lori's evaluation of the entire year. And it's an assessment of her progress on her goals, her performance on the standards, and then overall. And we're going to take a look at it. Okay, so I tried to add some color coding to try and help us all this year because it's so confusing what you're supposed to do. So if you did this last year, it's going to follow the exact same format. And I know you probably can't even read that. Uh, okay, well, we have the seeds, right? Can you guys bring the winning out of your seats? So I'd already populated this with Lori's goals that we just acted on. I was just sort of assuming it was going to be okay, but what's wrong, I'm just going to have to wait. So the student learning goal has the identified focus indicators and then a description of the goal, which is right here, the ensure the equity audit results are addressed by strengthening bright spots, creating a plan to address the areas of improvement. And then, not in this document, but in the one that I'm going to email you, there will be a link right in here where you can click on that and it'll take you to the evidence that you can be following along to see how Lori is doing. And then on each of, the, the second one, the second goal, building capacity around environmental stewardship, and then the last goal around communication down at the bottom. And then, so through the year, you'll use the document that I'm going to email you that has all the live links and you can click on that and it'll take you to presentations that might have happened during school committee meetings about the equity audit or a, a community forum that might have been held or whatever, whatever it might be, that all demonstrate ways that Lori is working toward accomplishing that particular goal. And then come the end of the year, you would check the box that marks whether or not she's exceeded the goal, met the goal, significant progress, some type of question did not mean. Does that, does that make sense so far? Okay. So these are the goals. The goals are purple. Please.
Okay. One thing, if you mark that she just met the goal, that's fine. But if you say she hasn't met the goal or she's surpassed the goal, you have to document. You're, why is there any evidence why you're saying that? You can't, you can't just say she exceeded the goal and check it off. You have to explain what evidence you're presenting that shows she exceeded it or that she didn't.
And we'll, when we get closer to completing this actual document, we'll, we'll walk through again. But what we even talked about at the end of last year was that it's really hard if you don't see this document to have at the start of the year to know what you're supposed to be doing throughout the year. So we're trying to build everybody, you know, have everyone ready throughout the year to be tracking progress. So purple are the goals. Why is it another thing on it? Oh, oh, look, I made little errors to highlight, but those are all going to be live links. I want to go. Okay, there we go. And yellow are the standards. So the two things that we evaluate on are goals and standards. So the, the gold or yellowy color is, are each of the different standards that we also evaluate on. One is for instructional leadership. Again, there'll be another link that takes you right to that document to show you the evidence and also provides some guidance on, on what those. Okay, so those things take, wow, that's a lot of errors. Okay, takes you to the, the rubric that explains. Okay, so what does exemplary actually mean? Exemplary for this particular standard would mean that the administrator leads teams in identifying and using multiple sources of evidence. It tells you exactly what a superintendent who is exemplary in that category is, what they are doing. And so these documents that will be linked in are really your guidance for whether or not the superintendent has accomplished those standards. We don't have the same thing for goals, but we do have it for the standards. The second standard is in management and operation. Again, there'll be a link that takes you to that document. And these, the first page explains what these are, but U is unsatisfactory and I is needs improvement, he is proficient, either exemplary. They are so abbreviated in all of the pages. The third standard is for family and community engagement. And the same thing, that's going to be under this professional culture. And then this is the summary page that puts all of those individual pieces together. So the purple pieces that you did earlier on, back in the goals, this page right here, you take these, these exacting ratings and you put them at that end onto the summary page, and the same thing for the standards. So you just go back, find the yellow, and copy them onto the summary page. And then when we get through, when we collect all of these at the end of the year, when everyone does their individual one, then the evaluation committee combines those into one document that we present. So I guess the point is, is that you will have all of this information. I'm going to email it out. I'm gonna email it out, um, probably not till I have your, your final document of all the links. And so I'll send it out once I got that final piece.
It's great, it's not, we had to do this first, and then I'll send it.
So I will send you basically a folder that's got your, this evaluation with the color coding and all the populated goals and standards. It'll have all the links to get to all of those rubrics. It'll have all of the links to get to Lori's evidence. It will all be in one place. And then throughout the year, you can be paying attention to how she's doing on the goal for sustainability and how she's doing on the standard for, um, management and operations. Any questions?
Did you not used to do this at the beginning of the year, is that what you were saying?
We walked through the timeline, but we never talked about the actual document you need to fill out. Yeah, and so you get to the end of the year, and you're like, oh, I didn't realize I was supposed to be paying attention to that exact thing in that exact way. So you have to go all the way back to your notes and try and piece it together. So we're hoping that this will help us keep track of it.
I wouldn't say that we didn't talk about it.
No, we did.
Really good about like.
Did you like this document?
Um, no, we didn't.
We, not, oh.
We talked about this in the year, but this document, you, cause we want to, I hope you see this now. Because in your path, it has not been, so, um, this has been ever evolving over the years.
Yes.
And it's so easy, so.
It's, you know, in, I think we take this part really seriously, like the evaluation piece. It, we take very seriously, especially compared to a lot of other districts that just kind of, nope, I'm not gonna name any names, but like some things, they just blow it off. Uh, but we take it very seriously, and we have, like you said, we have been ever evolving and trying to make this a better process that makes more sense, that we can do, you know, really diligence. And so I feel like all these links are just, I think, make it a lot better.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and as, the links will change in terms of evidence?
Yes.
The links will always be the same.
It will not.
As evidence gets added, the links will change.
That's a good point, too. Just because you click on, like, if you click on the link next Tuesday, there might not be hardly anything in one of the categories if that work hasn't started yet. But by January, there might be a ton of stuff, so you have to keep.
Can you always have to click on the latest link?
It'll be the same link, it'll just, you have completely.
You can always keep it in your notes, like in dark ages.
Thanks, really talk about that.
Uh, when you used to come in and you'd have to flip through like a binder like this.
You know, Teri, we do like that binder.
I like the binder.
I mean, I do appointments on my court board, and I use it at home, so.
Oh, oh, I'm glad I went to the end. So also in that folder that I'm gonna share, it will have the documents from DEEP and the documents from MASC, um, that provide all kinds of additional information. So if you wanna like get way into the weeds and, um, and learn even more about the whole process, it'll all be in one place. Please, yes.
Although we've really progressed very, or you've really progressed very much in terms of simplifying and making it more understanding. It's not a difficult process, the standards and the goals, uh, seem like they conflict. So one of the ways I think people will move is to start to think about, in terms of what we refer tonight, that any of that fit into what this evaluation should be?
Yeah.
So that's a practical application. Wouldn't you get annoyed? And is that anyway meaningful for what the goals are in terms of how she would begin to meet them or should we be the same?
Yep, that's spot on, but.
On this.
I'm a house teacher.
Anyway, practical application.
Oh, my question.
Yeah, please. When you're considering evidence or whatever you call it, would that, it goes back to when new members were elected? So like constituents that went in, it goes forward, is that?
Yeah, do you know, they typically start like July?
July?
July, one, one.
Yeah, it's July one, three, four, seven, that's the, it's not a four year.
It's not a four year. Yeah, and it, as I said, it ends in April, because we don't want to have a new person potentially come onto the school committee in May and have nothing to base our evaluation on. Like, how would they do that? That, that just is not fair to a new person, so, um.
And that's what it used to be done.
It's been, we've done it all different kinds of ways, but this is the way we settle.
Franklin Channel.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a story in paper about it, too. We could certainly end up, even if it was the actual things before your tenure.
Oh, I just wanted to know what, what applied to this.
What, what you're gonna do.
Whether or not I was coming for, just where it started.
Yep.
Start with.
Yeah, so.
But I'm saying that even if she wasn't on the board when it started, just recently.
I just go back to the new space.
Just recently was, a month ago was figuring, and that's on your tenure, so.
Yeah. Okay, great, moved on. Thank you, um, thank you, everyone, for that. Uh, next up is acting on the school committee operating protocols. So, uh, they were in the packet. There's no changes between our retreat over the summer. We, we didn't, we did a few weekends, but, uh, overall, the spirit of how we operate as a group, um, are pretty much the same, with those little edits. And so if, um, if we can approve them, then we will sign them all and hang them up and hold each other to them.
Sorry, what are we approving?
Um, the operating protocols that we did at the retreat. Remembering like two weeks. Um, so is there a motion to approve the operating protocols? They, they started, uh, Katrina, you got the second, um, any discussion? Great, um, oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
And suppose someone doesn't abide by many protocols, what's the, um, recalls?
So, um, I think that we have, as a group, we have an obligation to try and hold each other to them. So I think if, you know, you can come to me as the chair, and I can speak to someone, if it's something that I've done that has broken that, you can come to me and tell me I broke them. Um, and then we'll just try to work our way through it. I, I would guess that more than often than not, if somebody doesn't follow protocol, it's probably my accident, and so we'll just have to.
I was just wondering if it was a process, so.
Yeah, no, not really, but I think we're charged. I think we just, uh, we'll just hold each other to it, and, um, yeah.
I think, Mary, didn't we discuss that in policy, isn't it? Could you read what we said?
There, there are, there are ways on Robert's rule, on Robert's rules, where you can agree that, you would have to agree as a committee, though, that you wanna censor someone or public reprimand or private reprimand, so there are ways. But I think that unless something is so egregious, I think just talking to each other is civil human beings problem.
Exactly, I agree, I agree. Uh, any last question? Uh, all in favor of approving the operating protocols? Say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, any extensions? Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. Wait, where'd they go? Oh, yeah, that's nice. Yeah, no, okay. Um, next up is acting on a COLA for superintendent juror. Uh, is there a motion to approve COLA? Thank you, Mike, is your second?
Second.
Uh, thanks, Meta, and any discussion? Or just to remind the public, because I forgot, COLA stands for?
Cost of living adjustment.
So not a raise, just an adjustment, um, because Lori does not have built-in raises in her.
Well, they travel with the.
It's a nice brand.
You're, you're not.
Okay, you travel in print.
Any other, see, look what you started, now we're trying to. Uh, any last comments on the COLA? All right, all in favor of approving COLA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? That's unanimous, thank you very much, on to page two. Uh, next we have acting on policy BDA, school commit, I'm gonna have it skipping, if I can't between the two, then that's. Uh, act on policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting, and that was the one that we had, um, those edits, too, just to make it more clear at our last meeting, were there any edits or changes in that?
So.
Uh, wait, hold on.
That's when we reorganize at the end of the meeting, not beginning.
Yep, good, uh, Mike's got the, uh, motion, is your second?
Second.
Okay, and were there any edits or questions? Great, all in favor of approving policy BDA, say aye. Any opposed, any extensions? That's unanimous as well. Okay, first read of policy, I can turn it over and stop talking. Policy people, who's taken, Mary, who's taken?
Yeah, yeah, sure, it's fine.
Thank you.
So, um, I think I've mentioned this before, but Title IX, uh, recently changed. It was amended in twenty twenty, and then it's been amended again effective August first, twenty twenty four. And Title IX is the federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex. And the new, the new changes, there's some, a variety of changes, but the most significant one is, under the prior Title IX, under twenty twenty regulations, it prohibited sexual harassment. That was, it was defined, and it was, certain things were defined as sexual harassment. Now Title IX has been expanded to, I'll read you, just basically, um, there's two different types of discrimination now under Title IX. There's sex-based discrimination and sex-based harassment. And both include discrimination on the basis of sex, including sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation and gender identity. And quite frankly, this really, for, for sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, sexual orientation and gender identity, that really just brings Title IX in line with Massachusetts law, because Massachusetts law is already on the forefront of that and protecting those rights. So, um, to really distinguish sex-based, if you look in here, go into, well, the original, the beginning policies like AC, we just added sex stereotypes, sex characteristics into the protected categories, just to be in line with Title IX. So that is for, um, policy AC. ACA, um, is a little bit more detailed. That actually, if you look at policy ACA, that has the definitions of sex-based discrimination and sex-based harassment there. Now, just to distinguish, sex-based harassment is essentially sexual harassment. How we always think of sexual harassment. And it's pro quo, it's a hostile environment, or it's certain statutory offenses like stalking, um, sexual assault. Sex-based discrimination, that is not sex-based harassment. The best way I can describe it is, so the school district has a policy that pays, um, female employees more than male employees or vice versa. That is, anything that is sex-based discrimination, it's not sex-based harassment. So it's, it's a little confusing, but it's just, that's the way to, to think of it. Sex-based harassment is what we typically think of as sexual harassment. But we had to revise our policies to update, to comply with the Title IX definitions. Um, that was a directive in the Title IX. School districts had to update their policies, develop new grievance procedures, which are, um, operating protocols that you don't have to vote on. Um, and develop a notice of discrimination, which is included in this policy ACA on the next page. So we had to have a very specific notice of discrimination and related Title IX information, which is included in that policy ACA. Um, again, with the ACR, we just added sex stereotypes and sex characteristics in there, because they weren't included. Um, we included, just to be clear, that retaliation is not, is strictly prohibited. The biggest change is ACAB, which used to be called sexual harassment, but is now sex-based discrimination and harassment. And this policy was changed in, based on, Mass issued a policy, a model policy. Um, I actually had some questions with it, because I actually, some things didn't really line up exactly with how Title IX regulations are written. So I compared that policy with a couple other policies and my own analysis of Title IX, and we came up with this policy. It's a very broad, it, um, really sets out with Title IX and Massachusetts law now and the different definitions under both all state and federal laws, and is very comprehensive, because it needs to be comprehensive. Um, so it's a lot, but it's, it complies with Title IX. Oh, except for, I realized, I thought I had changed this, but I didn't. There is, um, the pages aren't numbered, but on the backside of, it's where it says informal resolution. And I'm trying to find, okay, if you keep going, it says grievance procedures and then informal resolution. At the beginning, it says after a complaint is filed, that's incorrect. Under the old regulations, um, a formal complaint had to be filed before parties could be offered an informal resolution process, as opposed to going through the formal complaint grievance process. Now, a formal complaint is not required, the district can offer. So let's say someone comes and says, um, you know, a student says that they're being sexually harassed by a student. Do you wanna file a formal complaint? No, we may still file a formal complaint, because the Title IX coordinator can decide. If it's serious enough, we're gonna file our own. But let's say we decide not to, and the student really doesn't want to, even though no formal complaint has been filed, we can say, well, we have an informal resolution process that we can offer you, you don't have to file. It used to be you had to file a formal complaint before that could even be offered. So I need to change that.
So that's.
To say, yes, regardless of whether our formal complaint is fired, files, we can, so I will mention that.
Okay, any questions from Mike?
I have just one question. Under definitions, there's some new language, and there's some strike language, which I have no, no issue with. My only issue is that the, the two terms, sex stereotypes and sex characteristics.
Yes.
Are added in many places, but there is no corresponding definition to those two terms.
And that's a good example, a good question, I mean, and Katrina asked that as a policy subcommittee. They're, they are not specifically defined under Title IX. They have chosen not to give specific definitions. But I can tell you, I have in my notes in the, in the, um, preamble of the Title, new Title IX regulations. So what they say is, sex stereotypes are fixed or generalized expectations regarding a person's aptitudes, behavior, self-presentation, or other attributes based on sex. Sex characteristics is intended to refer to physiological sex-based characteristics. Sex discrimination based on a person's physiological sex characteristics may include discrimination based on a person's anatomy, hormones, and chromosomes associated with male and female bodies. Very, very confusing.
So they won't give us definitions of those two terms?
They have chosen not to give specific definitions, because the, what the, um, U- U.S. Department of Education and Office for Civil Rights has said is, it's, they're too broad to narrow down examples. And so they don't wanna limit it. It's, it's, they're too broad, they're very broad terms.
Yeah, okay, so, and I'm not going tonight, but to, to look at this and then to possibly vote on new definitions, where the definitions included in the new definitions are not defined, is.
Well, they're new terms, but they're not, they're new terms, but they're, they're, they're general acceptance of what the terms mean, but they are not specifically defined in the Title IX regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other question? No, I have a question. Okay, so on ACAB, on the second page, the last bullet that starts sexual violence. Okay, so in that, in the, for example, it mentions student age, um, or disability of a student from having the capacity to give consent. But all the other pieces say like student and staff. So I'm just wondering if staff would also be somehow in an example, because a staff member who does not have the ability to give consent would fall into that category, wouldn't it?
Uh, yes.
And my second question is.
But I, I, let me, let me second on that.
I know that most of this is just like, we just have to follow the rules that they give us, and I understand. Um, but I, I never, because I'm not a healthy now, I don't know whether or not.
Right.
That particular statement, like an adaptation that we made, or this is like, you can't change it, because that's what they told me you have to do. And my other question is similar to that. Um, it's under emergency rem, I think, it's one difference. Sorry, sorry.
Emergency removal?
Yeah, it says, uh, emergency removal and administrative leave. Uh, so on the second page of that, it, the paragraph that starts with strikeout, a district may establish, like, is brought out, turn for the definitions. It mentions collective bargaining agreements in student handbooks, but I'm wondering, similarly, would it, should it also include staff, like employee handbook?
Um.
Or whether that doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
It's, it's, so the difference is, there's an emergency removal standard. But here's, here's the drill thing about discrimination under Title IX. Once the grievance. Once the grievance process has started, so a complaint is submitted and the district has an obligation to investigate it. The decision maker has to make a decision, the decision can be appealed. The respondent, who is the perfectly alleged perpetrator, cannot be disciplined at all until the grievance process is complete, fully complete, and a finding of responsibility has been made. However, you can emergency remove the student based, if you do, if the school does its own analysis, um, this, following the standard. And the standard is a little different now. It used to say the student had to pose a physical threat to safety. Now it doesn't, if they took up the word physical. Um, and they use the word imminent instead of immediate. The distinction though is that emergency removal standard doesn't apply to staff. Staff can be administratively removed. They do not have to meet the emergency removal standard. So they have to, they can be administratively removed, but we would have to follow the collective bargaining agreement and all applicable laws.
Uh, thank you. Awesome. Thank you guys for policy edits and, uh, the time I was interested, I appreciate it. Uh, so these will cut, we're learning, uh, this will come back to us. Uh, this was just the first read. So of course, if you have any other things, follow up with policy subcommittee and then we'll approve them in our next meeting.
Then the law can be reviewed.
Katrina, the, the new policy is... Uh, next up is the superintendent, update.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, each meeting, I am hoping to give a, uh, update on the process of the navigating the future together, um, which is, you know, our new vision, uh, the challenges and proposed plans. So just as a process, um, since we, um, this is the first meeting, we're really tracking about it. Um, we talked with the staff on, uh, September 16th. We sent the letter to staff and families on September 16th, that evening. Uh, we got, held a special forum for families of the T-Ticket, East Hamlet, and Morse Pond families. Um, staff also attended and a few people from other schools. Uh, the, the purpose of the closed meeting was to allow the families, uh, most impacted to hear the information, but also have a chance to share their feelings and thoughts. We had about sixty, um, participants in person and then there were, um, about fifty on Zoom. We held our first community forum last night at East Hamlet. Uh, there was approximately sixty people in attendance, uh, at that forum. Last week, there was, uh, a new idea brought forward, uh, to be considered, uh, in the transition, uh, process. Um, I brought it up last night at the forum. Uh, it seemed to be, um, received, uh, with positive interest. And so, uh, one of the requests was, could we add that as an option in the, uh, so I am revising the, um, on requests, revising the, um, presentation to include, um, this new option and, and I'll explain what that is. So we had the one year, um, and we explained that if, you know, and this is a decision from the community, but if the community, um, uh, I'm sorry, the T-Ticket and, and staff meeting. And if, if they chose to do the, um, the one year where we, we do the switch all at one year, it is going to be tight. Not the classroom size, but it would be, uh, but for all the extra great rooms and for the, the specials and the, uh, resource, um, it, it would be tight in the building. One of the proposals was, have we thought about actually keeping the preschool and the T-Ticket in East Hamlet, kindergarten together? So, um, if you did that, um, that would, that would take away four, four rooms and then there would be plenty. Uh, all specials would be in their, their, uh, classrooms. Um, we would have, uh, extra rooms for the reading and ELD services, uh, where they wouldn't be in small little offices, they would actually have rooms. Counselors would go back to their large, um, room in the building. Uh, so it does provide a lot more space, uh, if that first option was chosen. And, and you could still choose to do the kindergarten with the pre-k, uh, even if a two-year plan or the four-year plan. But we know if the two-year, uh, anyway, will allow a lot more space in, um, in, in East Hamlet. And so, um, I, since it is a choice, uh, you know, you determined that, that this is a choice of the community, I'm adding that extra one because it seemed to be positively, um, received of interest last night. I can see those faces when I, when I brought it up, uh, of everyone and it did seem to be. So, so it's just another kind of, um, avenue. Um, and that's the kind of communication back and forth at these forums where we're learning, you know, ways of making this easier and, and, um, you know, more successful. And, and we want to include this in, so, um, so we'll see that going forward. Um, the building needs, um, committee has been formed. Um, the members of the meeting dates, um, along with the process are posted, uh, on the website. As a reminder, the building needs committee's charge is to review the challenges and the proposed plans, review the community feedback, and then provide a recommendation to the school committee. Um, tomorrow night, uh, will be the first meeting of the building needs committee. And then also, uh, on the website soon, uh, will be a recording of presentation. Uh, so that, uh, we're looking back Friday. So my team, uh, did a great job recording the, the presentation and it'll be on the website. So those that can't come to a forum will have another avenue to review it or if you come to a forum and you want, you want to see it again. And then, uh, also, just as a reminder, the feedback forum is also on the, the website. And that is where we're collecting everything and either by paper, um, during the meetings um, or the form and then, uh, all that data, um, goes to the building needs committee. That's what we're here for.
And I would also just add that for school committee members, because, you know, we're a little bit more in the weeds of some of this than, um, than maybe a general public person. So if you have questions or concerns or ideas, um, to definitely filter those in as well so that they, we can make sure that we get, because the last thing we want is the school committee to have five thousand questions the day that we're presented it. So hopefully we can try and get some of that information flowing to us earlier. At least that's what I'm thinking. Mike?
Well, Sue was first.
Oh, Sue.
Um, would it be possible to have, once you have that, um, presentation up on the website, would it be possible to, um, do a posting on Facebook with the link to that?
It's our plan. That's the, Ryan's responsibility and that's part of our publicity plan, so yes, it will be.
Okay, and the only other thing is some kind of flyers to be able to put it like senior center or the, the Bedford Center, the, um, stakeholders within the town.
And that's on the, the, the plan and that's, that would be shared. This responsibility should be running around hosting all the posters.
Oh, okay.
We have a, we have a senior... We have a group teacher, Chris Horn, on how you do complete, uh, publicity plans.
Oh, and related to that, also having that video, I don't know if it's possible, Ryan, but to have that, um, that video play maybe on SCTV while our channel wants to point it.
I don't know. That's possible. Well, I guess I didn't give that thing. Kelly and I recorded an SCTV, uh, segment, but, um, I guess it's going to be an SCTV, so.
Guile.
But anyway, so we are trying very hard to get it out to the entire community and have options for it.
Okay, so I, I just realized, as I said on the PowerPoint, that I'm going to update that slide. We've already recorded, so the, it'll be the first presentation that's there. The extra option will not be on the website. And I don't know if Ryan, with his excellent editing skills, that somehow that slide could magically appear.
Magically appear in that, um, with a, with a little...
I think we can.
He's pretty, he's pretty magical, so we'll face it in post.
But related to what you mentioned about trying to get it out there, I was going to save her, um, my update at the end, but, um, just trying, we all are upset on a bunch of different committees, so in your role as like a liaison to whatever, please share the links to that webpage so people can get information on it. All right, I don't know, who's next, Mike?
Yes, I just, so, um, I've heard the same two questions from a lot of people and I know this is the time to ask, but is the timing a set thing? And is, and then the other question is, is there an option that T-Ticket East Hamlet would not be the source? Those are the two things that people keep asking me. Like, is this happening this year and is it definitely these two schools? Or if the data shows something different? So I don't know if we can address those.
I think the thing with it is, I'm sorry, I know it's a burden. Is that, you know, I, I think that the answer is never very satisfying because we've set this process in, in place. So the building needs committee would have to be the one that made a recommendation on either of those, really. And then we're charged with making the final call. So, I mean, that, that's probably not a very good answer, but I, I think that it's, we've put a process in place for the building needs committee, collect all this information, the community data, everything, and then make a recommendation to the school committee. And then, and it might look exactly like one of the proposals or it might not. And then we're charged with either following the recommendation or not. So it's...
To that point, I think that, like, if the building needs subcommittee comes back and says, you know, something that makes more sense to North Fountain or Mullen, Mullen Hall, those options are still on the table with that subcommittee?
That's within their purview to...
Okay, that's what people are asking, yeah.
But I mean, I also don't want to, I wouldn't want to get people false hope that it's going to be completely different because we, we don't know that yet.
Yeah, okay.
Um, about the communication again, is it going out on Power School? And I don't know if it's teacher-based, but Class Dojo, you know, that's almost closer to texting people. And for me, my experience is if you text a link to someone, they're much more likely to do it in a quick fashion. Nobody checks that Facebook page. No, that's, that's fair, unfortunately. That was... Yeah, that was one question.
I'll talk to the host first.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it can be communicated in all the ways that are... And the other question is, um, for the feedback, is there a limit to the number of times you can put feedback in? Because I know the nap, okay, you can do it and then have, it can be like, I mean, it's...
Absolutely. Yeah, oh, like some of those surveys, you can only do one thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
We should make sure, have we checked it?
Uh, Ryan created it and it is available.
Okay.
You can do it multiple times.
No limit.
I feel better when Ryan creates.
Because I know that when you talk to people, you get another bite from them and you're...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fair.
Absolutely.
Well, and as we get further along, like I, I was just so, Lordy, like I had thought, like earlier this week, that having occurred to me prior to this, so.
And should we submit?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you can see it on there. I think it should be, I think you can, of course, wear it, because we all wear multiple hats. Like, feel free to use the link, but I would love if you can also feed those to me so that we can figure out what to do with the committee's questions and... Okay, and as soon as I can, well, is that from our committee? Yes. And not, not me. Yeah, and thank you to you guys in advance because you have a lot of... Okay. Yes, let's move on. Okay. No, I'm not going to forget.
Uh, I added that back onto the, uh, update because I had it last time. I gave you the, the new social media, um, guidance, it's not a policy. Uh, and if you have any questions, uh, one Mary is here. So I just added that, you have questions? Anything, yeah.
Just a clarification question, this is the media policy that we don't allow comments back and forth, right?
Yes, but it's not a policy, yes, it's...
But guidance is...
Well, so you're, you just adopted, I think, the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, the new policy.
This was just guidance about school committee members using social media and possibly violating the open meeting law.
Thank you very much.
And, I mean, I read it before the last meeting, but I'm going to be honest, like it's not fresh exactly in my head and I'm sure other people feel the same way. So we also, if we come up with a question at some point, we can feed it to you.
Feed it to me and then they'll go to Mary and get back. I just thought if we had anything tonight that could have...
Yeah, and against pictures, because it wasn't in the package.
If I may, they do discuss this in Chartering the Force, which is a fantastic day, Katrina.
Thanks, my turn.
I would just send them, yeah. Yeah, that's great, change.
All right, so some good news. Um, the CTC, um, has approved our Mullen Hall playground. Very excited, so they have approved the two hundred and fifty back end to, um, to replace the, uh, or replace pieces, but upgrade, um, the other pieces of the Mullen Hall playground. So, um, Paul and I will go tomorrow night, um, to the committee, um, and answering questions and, and, uh, I just want to give a big shout out, thank you, because that's huge. Uh, and, uh, and now it goes to the town meeting, so it's, it's not final yet, but it goes to town meeting after that, so I just wanted to...
That's such a community aspect, I mean, there's always good ones.
Yeah. Uh, I wanted to bring up the Lawrence football because, uh, and just give a shout out to, um, Principal Bushey and our AD, um, that, I mean, it was, it was just, it was a long time coming, working on that to bring that football back. And it's incredible to have fifty students come out. Uh, and it's just, it's all come together, the, uh, kind of road race, supported the, the, the high-quality helmets and uniforms. And, um, and I, I was sick and I didn't get to go to the first, I cried, but several people texted, sent me pictures and, and videos, so I was happy about that. But it sounded like it was just an incredible opening. I know Susan, you were there, if you want to say something, I don't know.
It was incredible. It, it reminded me back in the nineties when we started Hamilton Youth Football and Pop War. And I mean, there were parrots lining the whole field. And I haven't experienced that in a long time, but it was such exciting. And they won their first two games by a lot. And really have to give credit to, um, Coach Morenci because the majority of these kids prior to that first game had not even ever put pads on.
I was, I heard that, they didn't know how to put their uniforms.
Two weeks prior to that first game, there were so many that never had participated at all. And they have a game tomorrow at four o'clock at Mashpee. At Mashpee House.
Do you want, you have, you don't have any last moments?
Uh, I can tell you in a moment.
Okay, I would love to.
Yeah, it, it's, it's just really exciting and it feels like community excitement, right? So, I'm really glad to remember that. And then my last update, we have, um, someone here, so we're in a very exciting shift, but I think you should show off and talk more about, um, the doctor telling you, talk about the Clipper Clash.
Oh, hey, hi. So, uh, we're super excited. We are going to host New England First Robotics, uh, on the Saturday for the Clipper Clash. It's an exhibition-style competition, it's out of, out of season, uh, if you will. And, uh, we're the first in the region to bring this here. Uh, it's pretty exciting, so we've got teams, fourteen teams, sixteen robots competing on Saturday. They're coming from all over New England. Uh, we've got a group coming down from Maine, um, which I think we have a couple coming from Maine. And, um, we're going to make open to the public at the field house at the high school from ten AM to five PM, so you can come through during the day. Uh, we're going to have, if you see this shirt, that's a volunteer that's there to help you and can, can guide you around and help you understand like what, what's going on at the different levels and, um, and then we're also, we have a maroon shirt with white print, which is, uh, going to be available for sale. And it's a fundraiser to just pull money back into, um, the process. We're very fortunate, uh, Family Education Foundation has provided, uh, through a project grant, the money to get up and running. Um, and our first competition is going to be at Bridgewater State University. We officially receive our task, uh, it's called Reef Escape in January. We, our team at the high school has three months to build their robot and then they need to show up and pass through the, the course in March. And so as long as they fare well, right, they continue up. They move up the levels and they go to future competitions. And they're all excited, you know, they're like, there's a world's competition, we want to get there, so. But this is that first step, bringing it into the region, creating that awareness and giving them an opportunity to have this, this demo and really know what it is before they get to the first competition. So if you have a few minutes, a few hours, uh, please come by and join us on Saturday again, ten to five. Um, Carmella is our Living Partnership Specialist, Andrew Cousins is our Family Play School Advisor to the Robotics Club, um, that are running around, they'll have these. And, uh, yeah, we're just really super excited about today and, uh, would love to have you. Thank you. Oh, and I brought this, if you want to learn from me, I brought a flyer.
I saw it online today, very exciting.
We got in the Lawrence School football team, as I said, tomorrow at Mashpee at four o'clock, away. The following week is Martha's Vineyard away. On October ninth is Mashpee, which will be a home game, but the home field is the Sandwich Road Field.
Okay. I don't have any more.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay, moving on to routine business, we have two sets of minutes. We have the, uh, ones from, let's take them separately. So, um, we have that one correction to the minutes from July ninth, it's our motion... So, um, we have that one correction to the minutes from July ninth, and sir, motion to approve the minutes from July ninth.
Wait, does the reminder have an edit?
Yeah, we, and these are edits.
Oh.
These are all set. Yeah, I don't know, whoever took notes, did you get that?
I took it, I'm gonna talk and share and all the.
Okay, and we got a second, um, and were there any last comments? All favor approving July ninth, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And any suggestions, suggestions, yeah, passes to you, thanks, all right, and same thing, let's, uh, take a motion for September tenth minutes.
A motion?
Mike? Sorry, Mike's got it, I think, and the most got the second, uh, any discussion, edits, uh, the September tenth, but yeah.
Under superintendent update number two, it says thanks, we found fire department. So take out that S.
Yeah, you're right, superintendent heard Dr. Gore report on the phone, uh, number two.
Oh, one minute. Oh, my gosh, I wonder if that was somebody. Presentation.
Python, number two.
Update. Catch it, yeah. Just the typo. Thanks. Yeah, take out the E D.
I did not.
Anything else? Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes from September the, with the one, say aye. Any votes, any additions? Okay, uh, committee reports, I have just a couple of quick things, um, I just wanted to mention that, um, we're gonna have to change our. Either change or cancel, we haven't figured it out yet, our meeting that's scheduled for election day, so we just wanna plan ahead. Um, we got a note from, uh, Michael Palmer, thanks to a question from Sue, uh, that we are discouraged from meeting on election day. So, uh, more to come on what we're gonna do about that, but just wanted you to be able to plan. And then also planning for, um, please plan on an executive session at our next, um, meeting. And the last thing was, um, signing up for the, um, building tour.
Building tours?
Is that what we're calling them? With Lord.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and maybe Sharon, maybe we could have that come out again, cause I think it got lost in the shuffle. Um, and that's all. Any other?
Okay, so my two monthly reports. The VIPS, um, report is, um, about the financial literacy, literatureless.
Literacy?
Literacy program called Junior Achievement, it's now, it's a really cool program. Um, it's now expanded to grades five and six. And the, um, annual event of the track, uh, meet that's usually been on like around Thanksgiving during the day. We're thinking about moving it to a nighttime event called Glow Night. And last but not the most best is the student, the student volunteer of the month is, um, Jacqueline Young, I think she goes by JJ, so. I have, uh, round of applause for her. And. You know, you read in things that the kids are involved in versus a paragraph this long of all the things.
I think I read that one too.
Yeah. They are impressed, um, and my other committee is the collaborative. The collaborative in the last two months has been in the search of the new executive director. They're on the homestretch and on October eighth, they will be interviewing, um, me, we'll be one of the people interviewing the, um, eight candidates. So eight have, and that's really exciting that that many candidates rose for interviews. So, um, for the collaborative, so I'll be keeping you updated on how that's moving along. Yes, okay, thank you.
Committee update?
Okay, um, the wellness committee met yesterday. There's gonna be a health there in the Field House at the high school on March twenty seventh. The nurses from the high school are active. Going to contention.
Yes, I would love to help.
No, I already gave.
Great, did you say March coming then?
March twenty seventh.
That's far.
All right. Yep, it's a good deal, then I have tea planning, I've got my nursing friends that are gonna do blood pressure. I'll put you down.
Oh, that's great, what a great.
Okay, um. Uh, they're gonna involve students and, um, health classes, gonna talk about, um, not peer counseling, uh, the, uh, program.
Uh-huh.
They'll hope fun are gonna be there, so it's, they're really trying to make this video dealing with, you know, physical health, social, emotional health. Um, they're very excited and very geared up, they're meeting with the municipal county health nurse who affects these studies more than it helps. Okay, the website is up and running. It, it's, I should have brought it in, we have lovely.
I'm gonna actually see if I can get it up.
Okay, yeah.
It is.
Great to have it up.
What, what is the address of the website?
Uh, what's, it's, um, Ryan, maybe you can find it faster than I am, it's the wellness web, it's on our we- website, but it's a webpage.
Oh, like it's a webpage.
A page for the.
Second thing in the side, though, I, uh, I'm hearing, I actually have to share some, it's a lot harder than.
It was, and you did a beautiful job in putting the, uh, logo behind the image, it was really lovely, it was really thoroughly done.
Yeah, it's, it's worth showing, that's why.
The policy committee, uh, policy, wellness policy of that there, um, definition activities, um. We want to talk about plans for coming year, there was certainly a discussion about nutrition, uh, and the changes in nutrition happening here with our families, so. Uh, there was also a general goal that they want to increase participation of members from different schools to participate in wellness committee. So it was suggested that we put a meet at different schools and possibly, even if people don't join the committee, we'll get feedback from the different schools in terms of what issues are involved.
That's nice.
Can you add to the graphic, um, there's a lot of information here, put it back, the graphic first. I know you're already showing.
The graphic, okay, this is a graphic.
So this is a graphic and then the, the three, I'm sorry, Margaret, you can do it, but the, the three areas.
Mm-hmm.
Nutrition, uh, physical activity, social emotional, uh, learning, if you click on those, then what Brian was just sharing, there's. Incredible amount of information for staff and families.
Yes. I was gonna say.
Yes, yeah, no, that's okay, I was, I got excited when you brought this up as a, a, a thing. Yes, yeah.
Come for dogs. I know. Thank you, thanks, Margaret, I like you.
Uh, any other update, request for information, like policy was kind of, you know, and, and.
Uh, well, I know, you guys don't have an update, cause you're always like. We're, here's what we did, you just read it all, so, yeah, that's true. Uh, and that's it, all right, uh.
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor of returning? You don't need to.
Not very anxious to spend my time, it's a little time, you can get, you don't have to, so.